I found out that I have no parents, no brothers, no close relatives, and I'm an orphan at the age of 14.
Councilman Paul Coret says the Courage to Remember is a vivid memory of the Jewish persecution, and it's an eye-opener for everyone to see.
And I'm very proud to have helped bring it here as we remember Holocaust Remembrance Day, Yom HaShewa.
Popek says he's privileged to be recognized at such an impactful event.
Thank you very much for inviting me. It's a great time.
I'm Tara Gibson, reporting for LA this week.
The Courage to Remember exhibit will be on display at the City Hall Bridge Gallery through May 9th. It's the latest in high-tech screening equipment to detect a nuclear threat, and the ports of LA and Long Beach are the most recent recipients. Anna Marcos shows us how the choke point operation will make our ports a little safer.
It's full steam ahead for the maritime choke point operation at the Port of Los Angeles. A who's who list of the top law enforcement operations in the country are getting together to tech for everything from dirty bombs to the slightest uptick in radiation levels.
Incoming boats and ships under 300 tons will be randomly screened with these non-intrusive systems.
This program allows our region the ability to stop or prevent an attack before it happens with current detection capabilities and multi-agency collaboration.
The reason for all the radiation testing, the Department of Homeland Security's Domestic Nuclear Detection Office has awarded the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles money for training and equipment to detect radiological threats. The ports could get as much as $30 million and are the first to get the money.
So generally, if the exterior screening team receives a hit or they have a detection of any radiological sources on a vessel, they notify the interior team. The boat that's underway, it slows down, the interior team can come in a little bit closer, and they'll get a little bit better reading on it, and if it's warranted, we will conduct a stop on that vessel.
There is no threat at the moment, but the extra gear and training will come in handy should any potential threats arise. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Besides the LA Port Police, the LAPD and the Long Beach Police Department, other agencies taking part include the Los Angeles Airport Police and the LA Fire Department. Driving around town, you've no doubt seen them on the curb, a dirty old mattress or sofa waiting for pickup by garbage trucks. But as Yana Kay tells us, a new pilot program will help rid you of those unwanted bulky items without the street-side eyesore.
It's not that heavy, just kind of bulky.
Home owner Gideon Krakoff is more than happy to let these Department of Sanitation workers come inside his home and get rid of his unwanted stuff, like this old workbench.
Okay, so some of the stuff is right over here.
It's all part of a new pilot program where city workers can come inside your home to help you remove unwanted bulky items instead of you leaving them on the curb.
I think it's a great program. I think that one of the issues in our community, Council District 1, is some of the blight, people putting stuff on the street, mattresses, roofing materials, other things from their homes. So it's good now that they have an option for sanitation to come in the house, get that stuff off the streets.
And that's exactly the idea behind the service, to prevent unsightly and old items like this toilet from littering neighborhoods and sidewalks. Councilmember Gilbert Sadio says cleaning up the streets in his district is a priority.
We will come and pick it up, like UPS, like FedEx, even like pizza delivery. We will come and pick it up.
Now, there are several guidelines you have to follow for an in-home pickup. For example, if you want an appliance removed, make sure to unplug it from the wall first to get it ready for crews. Sanitation workers say the program will also save you effort, especially those who can't lift heavy items.
Basically, to help the elderly and keep the city of LA clean.
Helping keep LA clean, one pickup at a time. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Residents living in Council District 1 can call LA's Bureau of Sanitation at 1-800-773-2489 to schedule an in-home bulky item pickup Monday through Friday. The program could expand to other parts of the city in the near future. Crews begin the work of building a connector for the Expo and Green Lines, a mountain lion tests positive for rat poisoning, and a familiar face at City Hall steps into a new position. These stories and more in City Beat. Major construction kicked off on Metro's Crenshaw-LAX Transit Project the first few days of May, as crews begin to build underground stations 80 feet beneath Crenshaw. The bus stop located on the east side of Crenshaw Boulevard will be temporarily relocated to the southeast corner of Crenshaw and Stalker. The 8.5-mile Crenshaw-LAX Transit Corridor Project will connect the Expo and Green Lines. Construction on the stations is expected to take four years. Councilman Felipe Fuentes is helping the Department of Public Works get the word out about a significant increase in copper wire thefts from street lighting systems in certain valley communities. Fuentes and Public Works officials are asking residents to call 911 to report suspicious activity, such as unauthorized personnel working on lighting systems. They say city workers not only don orange vests and hard hats, but carry city identification. Vehicles affiliated with the Bureau of Street Lighting are also clearly marked as such, and outside companies hired by Public Works should also have their company names clearly marked on their vehicles. A UCLA wildlife biologist told a Los Angeles City Council panel that traces of rat poisons were found in blood drawn from the mountain lion named P22, possibly responsible for weakening the puma's immune system.
The hypothesis is that chronic exposure to rodenticides alters the immune function of cats, our wild cats like bobcats and mountain lions, and that increases their susceptibility to severe cases of mange.
He's just a representative of a larger issue that we're dealing with now, so I'm really glad it was brought to our attention.
Scientists captured P22 to treat him for the skin disease before releasing him back into the wild. Councilman Mitch O'Farrell has directed the city's Department of Recreation and Parks to report back to the committee on the use of rodenticides in city parks. The Los Angeles City Council has voted unanimously to appoint longtime city employee Sharon So to become the city's new chief legislative analyst. The appointment makes So the first woman and first person of color told the position of the city's top policy adviser. So currently serves in the office of the chief legislative analyst as an executive officer.
She has seen some of the worst and best city budgets in the last couple of years. She's been involved in every city budget process since 1987.
So will replace current chief legislative analyst Jerry Miller when he retires in late August. Miller received a standing ovation from council members during So's confirmation vote. It's now gotten a lot easier to gain access to one of Hollywood's biggest stars. We're talking, of course, about the Hollywood sign. Rasha Goel tells us about a new service that's treating visitors of the Hollywood sign like VIPs.
It's a popular hotspot to visit for both Angelenos and tourists, but getting to the Hollywood sign can be challenging, especially when it comes to traffic. But thanks to a new pilot program, you can bypass LA traffic for your close-up with the iconic sign.
This is going to be a three-month promotional launch for providing a shuttle service up to a viewing area on Mount Hollywood Drive, looping to, or circular, looping to the Griffith Observatory, and then coming back down to the parking lot right here where we stand.
I'm very excited that we're taking this step because there's nothing like sharing our city. There's nothing like the tourist dollar that's so important to all of us and to the people of Los Angeles, the economy.
Their shuttle ride costs $7. Visitors can park at the Greek Theater and hop on or hop off at the Griffith Observatory or near the Hollywood sign. The entire experience lasts 30 to 35 minutes. Officials say it allows for easier access and is hassle-free for visitors.
Parking at Griffith Observatory is extraordinarily limited, and the fact that someone can avoid the hassles of weekend parking and ride a space vehicle.
Beechwood Canyon residents say they're hoping the shuttle service will help divert tourist traffic away from their neighborhood, which has been a popular throughway to the sign.
It's become kind of a safety issue because the streets are so narrow that it's become quite overwhelmed by the number of people, and so I think, you know, this will help just take some of that pressure off.
The shuttle service will be offered only on Saturdays and Sundays and will run from May through July. Children two and under ride free. In Hollywood, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Reservations for the shuttle must be made online at laparks.org. And in this week's list of things to do, the 30th Annual Asian Pacific Film Festival, a free family day at a local museum celebrating all things baseball, and a DIY event on Mother's Day. The 30th Annual Los Angeles Asian Pacific Film Festival is taking place from May 1st through May 11th at various theater venues, including the Directors Guild of America at 7920 Sunset Boulevard, as well as the Japanese-American National Museum in Little Tokyo at 100 North Central Avenue. Over 140 films will be screened during the festival. In the documentary, "The Road to Fame," the director follows five kids in China's Central Academy of Drama as they go through the eight-month training process. And the feature-length film, "A Picture of You," a strange siblings from New York return to their mother's home in Pennsylvania following her death and discover the full life led by the woman they simply knew as Mom. For the full list of other films, times, and locations, go to asianfilmfestla.org. Also taking place at the Japanese-American National Museum on Saturday, May 10th, is the Target Free Family Saturday with the theme "Take Me Out to the Ball Game." The family festival from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is part of the museum's celebration of the new Dodgers Brotherhood of the Game exhibition. There is a free gallery tour as well as a screening of the 1950 film "The Jackie Robinson Story," as well as baseball carnival games like the Milk Can Toss for kids to enjoy. And there will also be a poetry reading in honor of Mother's Day. The museum is located at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo. For the full day's itinerary, go to janm.org. And speaking of Mother's Day, the Craft and Folk Art Museum at 5814 Wilshire Boulevard is hosting a Mother's Day event on Sunday, May 11th from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. While the museum is closed for exhibition installation until May 17th, it is open for Mother's Day, so you can spend the afternoon with your mom crafting paper flowers into a beautiful, long-lasting bouquet for her. While there is an admission fee, the day is free for moms. Go to cafam.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Some of the world's most exotic endangered animals have found a new home at the LA Zoo. Gil Reyes is on safari at the new Rainforest of the Americas exhibit.
Making a big splash with zoo visitors are over two dozen rare and endangered species from the jungles of Mexico, Central and South America. Among the new arrivals are these giant river otters. There are fewer than 5,000 of these creatures left in the world.
Oh, it's amazing. It's so cool in here.
The LA Zoo's newly opened Rainforests of the Americas exhibit also houses this 8,000-gallon viewing tank, home to these fearsome fish from the Amazon.
And I got to look back there, kind of reminded me of my days in City Hall looking at those piranha, but there's some really great stars, and you otter see them back there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's right, real-life piranha swimming just beyond this glass. You have the red-bellied piranha and the pariah piranha. Now, at first glance, it would appear that the fish are swimming alongside the otter, which would be absolutely devastating. Good thing is, there's glass separating the two animals.
Take a stroll through the rest of the 2.2-acre rainforest, and you'll find the harpy eagle, considered to be the largest and most powerful raptor in the Americas; the howler monkey, known for its short snout but keen sense of smell; and also the Central American tapir. Nocturnal by nature, this one took time out from its nap to say hello to us.
This is also the culmination of 15 years of work, $179 million that were provided by the citizens of Los Angeles through bond measures, through public money.
The team is Public Works, and the team is engineering, and the team is contract administration. And then there's the great coaches of Glazier who raised the money. Give Glazier a big hand. Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association.
The LA Zoo is open to visitors seven days a week. In Griffith Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
And coming soon to the zoo's rainforest, an all-new jaguar exhibit. It's expected to open around the holiday season. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
We are also joined by our city attorney, Mike Furers with us today. But anyway, Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonnabushka, and O.C.D., England, and Fuentes, Suezar, Coretts, Corian, LaBanche, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Coretts moves, Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Fuentes moves, and Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 1 through 6. They are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members 1 through 6 specials. I do not see any, so if we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Let's move on to the next section. Mr. Clerk, I think that's items 7 through 10?
That is correct, sir. Items 7 through 10 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Sir, we have cards on all items.
Okay, so let's move on. Do we have, what would be next?
Mr. President, it's a bit too early for the special meeting, so that would take Council back to presentations.
Why don't we take up a few items then at this time?
Very good, sir.
Until we're ready for our presentation. Before we start, though, I do want to say that we had a very moving ceremony yesterday relating to our fallen police officers. I want to say to Mr. Englander, you did a phenomenal job, and as a friend, I'm very proud. It was a very classy ceremony, and I want to give a shout-out to Chief McCarthy. It was very moving, touching, and it had a lot of class, so I do want to indicate that. Plus, we were joined by Councilmember O'Farrell and Councilmember Corian. We also had our city attorney was with us, Mike Furers. And... We also had our city attorney was with us, Mike Fuer, and Ron Galperin was there. So I believe we're ready to begin with our ceremony today. Okay, let's get this started. I'm giving all of my hand signals. It just doesn't appear to work at this time. I think we're waiting for the mayor. Mr. Buscaino, who is leading the council in this ceremony, is he ready to proceed? Well, let's go. We are now going to recognize Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome to the Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month festivities here at your City Hall. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me and asking me to spearhead these festivities a day that we're going to treasure here at City Hall. I'd like to, we'll be hearing shortly from our mayor and our city attorney, but before we dive into the program, I ask that we take a moment of silence for Los Angeles Police Officer Nick Lee, who passed away in the line of duty earlier this year. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you to the entire U family. We continue to keep our thoughts and prayers with you and the entire community. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome our mayor, Eric Garcetti, to give opening remarks.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, thank you for allowing me to return home, members of the council. It's great to be back in these chambers. I want to thank Joe Buscaino, our great council member, who's taken the lead on this this year, as well as our city attorney, Mike Fuer, who is with us. All my esteemed council colleagues that are here today. This is a proud day for Los Angeles. We celebrate in United States Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, which is a celebration both of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. Some may ask, why is it in May? And in May, this was, there's so many pieces and strains of history, but in May 7th, 1843, the first Japanese immigrated to the United States. And to mark the anniversary of the completion of the transcontinental railroad in May 10th of 1869, these two things were seen as signature events. But here in Los Angeles, our Asian roots stretch back much further than those dates. In fact, the pobladores that came here, the original party that set forth to settle Los Angeles, two of them were classified as Chino. In Spanish, Chinese, they were actually Filipino. Unfortunately, they didn't make it, and in some ways, it's a fitting metaphor for the work left undone. But for Asian and Pacific Islander communities that have been here for so many years, that have made this city, this state, and this country strong, we celebrate leaders today who have, in many ways, embodied the very best of this city. I want to thank the honorees first and foremost. I worked very closely with CIPA, the search to involve Filipino Americans, while serving on the council. They were integral in the creation of Historic Filipino Town here in Los Angeles, the first in the United States. And I can testify personally to Joel and their deserving of this service award. I'm so pleased to see Joel's leadership and the organization thriving, and congratulations as well. And I know that we are all true believers in the spirit of Los Angeles, that no matter where you come from, that this city is a welcome and safe haven, and that spirit is exemplified by Deborah Su, who has dedicated her career to working with immigrant API survivors of domestic and sexual violence. But I also want to take a moment to recognize a dear, dear friend and somebody I relied on heavily during my tenure on the city council. Don't worry, Avac will take care of that. Someone who, off the top of her head, can tell you what happened, what's possible, and how to get things done at City Hall. My dear friend Sharon So. Where's Sharon? I want to congratulate you all for choosing as the next chief legislative analyst here in the city of Los Angeles. She has made history so many times before this moment, but I can think of no more deserving person to lead the advice given to this council, and she's an extraordinary person and friend. And I also want to thank Ernest Lee, the president of the Korean Friendship Bell Preservation Committee. In my office, I have a model of that bell, recently restored, a gorgeous, gorgeous asset. Doesn't matter if you're not the representative of the 15th district, colleagues, everybody should get down there if you've never seen it. It is an extraordinary piece of beauty and probably the greatest gift given by the Korean people to any people in the United States here. Different generations come there, it's centered around friendship and becoming someone's friend. And of course, I want to acknowledge our heroes that we see here in the front row. Our heroes who fought in World War II, just as my grandfather did, who wore a uniform at a time a nation rejected in many ways who they were, they stepped up and proved what being an American is all about. They are responsible for the freedoms that we directly enjoy, so congratulations to our veterans as well. And the Far East Movement, who you'll hear from, who are, where are they? Right back here, exemplify the new face of Los Angeles, that it doesn't matter where you come from, it doesn't matter where you live, it doesn't matter what language you or your parents spoke, doesn't matter whom you love, how you worship God, or if you don't, it doesn't matter what your gender or your age is, what matters is what you set your eyes to. And we see in Los Angeles right now, we are nothing less than the capital of the Pacific Rim on its east coast. Los Angeles is where Latin America discovers Asia, where Asia comes to view Latin America. This is a place where it's not just the great Filipino and Chinese and Japanese and Korean communities. We've got Camero communities and Vietnamese communities, we've got Bangladeshis, we have Indians and people from the Maldives, we have folks who live here from Bhutan, we have the most robust Mongolian community anywhere in the world. We welcome these folks all the time. This truly is a snapshot of the world, so when we celebrate Asian and Pacific Islander heritage in Los Angeles, we are celebrating the strains of the world. So congratulations to all of our honorees. I'm so proud to be your mayor and alongside with this city council to make sure that history isn't just told for the past but made in the future. Congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Garcetti. It's great words. Colleagues, help me welcome our city attorney, Mike Fuer, to say a few words. Thanks, Joe. Thank you. Joe, thank you very much. It's a little-known fact, but I'm going to reveal it now, Joe, that the Buscaino family, following the trade route established by Marco Polo, made its way through China. There are Buscainos in the Philippines, in Japan, throughout the South Pacific, and now you made your way here. So that explains why Joe is in charge of this today. I want to say a couple serious things. First, I want to turn to our honorees in the front row this morning, our veterans. My dad is a veteran of World War II and was in a Nazi prisoner of war camp. My mother remembers vividly growing up in Boyle Heights, and she remembers the day that all her Japanese-American friends suddenly weren't there. They had gone from the neighborhood to Monzanar. And I think it is an extraordinary thing to honor you today, recognizing that, on the one hand, our nation had turned its back on the civil rights of one of our key communities, and nonetheless, we have you today exemplifying courage and bravery and fighting for the very country that had done that. It's an exceptional moment in the history of the city to provide this recognition this morning. I want to acknowledge all of our honorees. The mayor mentioned Sharon So, who is an old friend and colleague from years gone by. What a remarkable leader and a testament not only to skill and excellence, but to the remarkable journey that the Asian-American community has made here in Los Angeles. Deborah Su was just in my office the other day as we worked together to reach out effectively to the Asian-American communities of Los Angeles to assure justice for each of our neighborhoods. And I want to conclude with this. In celebration of this very special month, next Thursday, the 15th, the Chief Justice of the California Supreme Court, Tawny Kanteel Sakauwe, the first Asian-American Chief Justice in our Supreme Court's history, will be joining us here at the Deaton Auditorium at 5:50 in an event that is sponsored through my office and the Asian Pacific City Attorneys Association, delivering remarks, responding to questions. I invite all members of the Los Angeles community to join us. That will be an historic event here. Thank you very much, Mr. President, all members of the city council. We all join together in recognizing a community that continues to make an indelible mark on the best of Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fuer. Our final speaker before we dive into our honorees is our city controller, Mr. Ron Galperin.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Buscaino, and also to our city attorney. Thank you so much for having me here today. We're here, of course, to celebrate the tremendous contributions of the Asian and the Pacific Islander American community to our great city, to our state, to our country. And the greater LA area is home to more of the Asian-American community than anywhere else in this country, home to the largest populations of Filipino-Americans, Thai-Americans, Cambodian-Americans, and many others in the nation. And interestingly enough, if you look at those of us who have just spoken right now, we are all the children and the grandchildren of immigrants. That is what makes this country so incredible, so great, and what really enriches our city of angels. Every day inside City Hall and out of City Hall, we benefit from the contributions of the vital community to our cultural fabric, and no aspect of our city has not reaped the benefits. It's seen in our history, and it is reflected in the vibrant communities. By the way, there are also 180,000 APIA-owned businesses in LA County alone, and we are hoping to even increase that even more over the upcoming years. And we have 45 different APIA ethnic groups speaking 28 languages, each with its own rich history, culture, and challenges. And we have some amazing neighborhoods, of course, including Koreatown, Historic Filipino Town, Thai Town, Chinatown, Little Tokyo, and others. By the way, I am very proud to be joined by a whole bunch of members of the APIA community who are in our controller's office. Give us a big cheer. And so today, we celebrate those innumerable contributions, a rich history, a vibrant present, and a great future in the city of angels, one of nearly unlimited potential. Thanks for allowing me to be here, and it's a great honor to be among our honorees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Oh, how blessed are we?
Mr. Buscaino, if I could just sneak something in quickly, something that's very important, and I think Mr. Corretz and Mr. Sadio may want to speak on that. Come on, George. We have with us today a former Assembly Member for the State of California, a man who, Mr. Fuer woke up one day and was taken away from his home. A man who could have grown up bitter, a man who could have turned his back on this great country, but he did not. Joined the service, Air National Guard, Black Belt, and KDU, elected to the California State Assembly, and to this day, the first and only Democratic Caucus Chair of our Democratic Party. Could we give a round of applause to my friend, George Nakano? Stand up, George. Put the camera on, George. When I served Mr. Mayor as Speaker, all of the short guys got promoted. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you. As another member of the Short Caucus from the State Assembly. It's a great honor to have George here. There's no one who was of higher integrity, who was a better colleague, who was a harder worker in the state legislature than George. So it's great to have you here. I'd love to have you join us on the council. I don't think that's going to happen, but you were a wonderful colleague and an amazing legislator, and we appreciate all your good work and happy to have you here.
And now his seatmate in the Assembly, Mr. Sadio. They sat next to each other the first two years.
You know, Mr. Speaker?
I don't mind.
Mr. President, you know, I grew up in Boyle Heights, so the friends I grew up with were people like Ali Niebel, Melvin Godoy, Howardine, Sylvia Sue, and of course, Brian Miyakawa, retired LAPD, a great running back, great basketball player, great friend, one of my best friends. I used to stay over at his house when I was a kid. And so I had a great affinity for the Asian-American community when I got to the legislature. But that only got richer and deeper with this man that I love here, because I learned so much from him. George, actually, I'm going to let you in on a secret. George actually shares my politics, but he could never vote his politics. He had to vote his district. And George was one of those members, competitive members, that we needed so that we could maintain the majority, so that we could maintain the speakership. And so George had to vote his district, and his district was very, very conservative, as you recall. It could have easily been a Republican district. So George was my seatmate. Now, when I got to the Assembly, I liked to get up and walk around and talk to all the colleagues. Basically, I was never in my seat. And so George, as our colleagues' courtesy, would push my button for me to cast our vote, and so that was routine. And so when I got up, every time I got up, I'd ask George, "George, please push my button when the bill comes up. On your button, you vote your district. On my button, you vote your heart." And so he was always able to cast a vote for our shared politics on my side of the desk and for his district on his side of the desk. George, I'm so excited to see you here. I didn't know you were going to be here. I have incredible appreciation for your guidance and your mentorship when I got to the legislature. You know, I admire and love you and incredible discipline. It was great to see you early in the morning sometimes when I'd be taking my walk or my jog. George would be out there working his routines. Just so proud to have served with you and so happy to see you here today, brother. God bless.
Again, just give a round of applause for George. Mr. Buscaino, we return the program back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we celebrate the contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander-Americans in making our Los Angeles the diverse and culturally vibrant place it is today. And my own district was home to thousands of Japanese-Americans who, just like my parents, came from Italy, came to San Pedro to be a part of the booming fishing industry. The San Pedro, or San Pedro's home to the Korean Friendship Bell that was given as a gift to the people of the Republic of Korea 37 years ago to celebrate the country's bicentennial anniversary of independence and to commemorate the historic bonds between the two nations. Our first award goes to a group of artists who began playing local clubs in Los Angeles and through hard work and perseverance have risen to international success. Help me welcome the Far East Movement. The Far East Movement recipients of this year's Dream Award consists of four members, Kevin Nishimura, James Rowe, Jay Chong, and DJ Vermin. The group met in high school while living in the Koreatown area. With their single "Like a G6", the Far East Movement was the first Asian-American music group to earn a number-one hit on the Billboard Hot 100 list. Please, and...
Sing it, come on, "Like a G6".
The mayor wants... They, I had an opportunity to see them live when the, our president was, during his inauguration ceremonies and festivities in Washington, D.C. And when they announced them onstage, I turned to my wife and said, "They're from Los Angeles. We're so proud of them representing our great city in our nation's capital" and played the great song "For All", which I encourage you to visit YouTube and watch their video. So help me welcome Far East Movement.
Well, I mean, this, we never really get a chance to say this, but, you know, we really got to thank the veterans and a lot of the generation before us that kind of paved the way and gave us the opportunity to just live a normal life as L.A. kids and really be inspired, you know, without any restrictions. I mean, we grew up all around different parts of L.A., and we always say this, and wherever we go, every city we go, no matter what country we're in, we're most grateful to the city of Los Angeles, just the diversity from the clothing, to the food, to the people, to the neighborhoods. That's what our music is. I mean, we never really set out to think, you know, any social relevance or like, you know, let's be an Asian-American group and try to change things. It was more just, let's make music and let's represent our city that we're proud of. And so this is a real surprise and a real honor, and we just really want to thank our city and everybody that's kind of paved the way for us.
Yeah, right. We also have a resolution honoring the Far East Movement, our recipients of this year's Dream Award on behalf of the entire city family.
Wow.
All right. Congratulations, guys. We love you. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations.
The next award goes to an organization who has shown great dedication to service to the Asian-American community. Founded in 1972, the Search to Involve Filipino Americans, or SIPA, works towards enhancing the quality of life for Filipino-Americans and other communities in Historic Filipino Town as well throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. They provide health and human services, community economic development, and a place where all people of all backgrounds can come together. SIPA provides a wide range of services from after-school enrichment programs to language-specific counseling services to business developmental programs. It's my honor to present, it's our honor to present the Service Award to Joel Jacinto, SIPA's Executive Director. Joel, thank you so much on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles for your work and your organization they do for the Filipino-American community. Joel Jacinto, ladies and gentlemen.
On behalf of SIPA, I'd like to wish you all a great big Mabuhay. I just wish you all a great life. I want to thank our Honorable Mayor Garcetti, our Councilman Buscaino, Council President Wesson, our own C.M. Mitchell Farrell, and the entire committee for recognizing our organization's search to involve Filipino-Americans as we reside in Historic Filipino Town. I accept this on behalf of the organization, but you know what? I'm going to dedicate this award today to the Delano Manos, because 40 years ago, they were there. And at the same time that we say, "Mabuhay, Cesar", we need to say, "Que viva Larry Itliong", "Que viva Pete Velasco", "Que viva Philip Veracruz", and "De Muthan", because it was a unified, it was United Farm Workers Union. So I accept them in their memory to make sure that we are always about inclusion, about history, and about celebrating each other. So on behalf of SIPA, I wish you all a great big Mabuhay.
So you got that, Mayor? And Joel, on behalf of the entire city, we congratulate you again for all that you do for our city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, there are Buscainos who reside in the Philippines, Joel. Absolutely, there are. And also for the record, my executive assistant, Lulu de Langley, is listening and tuning in, and she's born and raised in the Philippines, and she is a proud moment for her as well. The Spirit Award goes to an individual who has been an important and daring leader in the Asian-American community. Deborah So has been the Executive Director of the Center for the Pacific Asian Family, or CPAF, since 1999. CPAF is a nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting immigrant Asian Pacific Islander survivors of domestic and sexual abuse. It opened the first domestic violence emergency shelter for Asian-American women and their children in the nation. CPAF also operates the only rape crisis center in the nation dedicated to surviving API survivors. Deborah previously worked as an attorney at the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, where she established the API Legal Unit. She's been the deserving recipient of many awards and honors for her dedicated service to non-English-speaking immigrant women and her commitment to eradication of the root causes of violence. It's a great honor that we present Deborah So the Spirit Award this month. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for this great honor, Mayor and City Council members. I share this honor with the tireless and talented staff of SIPA who work around the clock, 24/7, to addressing the needs of survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, and to the board who are thoughtful in making sure that we are relevant and effective, and the supporters, including the city of Los Angeles, who allow us to make a living doing what we are passionate about and we love doing every day. You know, but most importantly, I want to share this with the survivors who take on a very courageous journey of healing, and they are so amazing in how resilient they are, and they are able to survive some of the most horrific abuses. And also, on a more personal note, I'd like to thank my life partner, Robin Toma, who introduced me to this issue 33 decades ago. And 15 years ago, we made a vow to make our community more inclusive, more just, and more nurturing. So thank you for this honor.
Thank you very much. And again, another resolution on behalf of the entire city, commending you for your, what you do for our entire city. Thank you so much to you and your organization, SIPA. Thank you. Sam, okay, great. I want to recognize my former Chief of Staff, Deputy Mayor Doan Lu, who is a proud San Peter and Asian-American. Where's Doan?
Yeah, where is Doan?
Doan Lu. We, our next group of honorees includes a group of veterans who fought for our country in World War II, recipients of this year's Hero Awards. We commend them for their bravery and service as Asian-Americans who served in our armed forces after being in internment camps across the southern and western United States. In World War II, these veterans served in various efforts, including the Champagne, the Gothic Line, the P.O. Valley campaigns, as well as the battles in France, Italy, China, Burma, and India Theater. Some of the veterans here today were part of the historic parade march down Constitution Boulevard in Washington, D.C. after the war was over and the war was won. Their efforts and bravery were awarded the Eighth Presidential Unit Citation by President Truman, and other medals won by the men here today include the Bronze Star Medal, the Purple Heart Medal, the Combat Infantryman Badge, the EAME Campaign Medal, the Distinguished Unit Badge. And in November 2011, the 442nd Regimental Combat Team was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal. Please help me, join me in presenting these veterans with the API Heritage Month Hero Awards for their accomplishments and thank them for being here today and thank them for our service to our country. And speaking on behalf of the entire group is Sam Fukijawa. Fuji Kawa. They had the K and the J backwards. Help me welcome Sam, a war hero. Thank you very much. Yes, we'll hold this for you, Sam.
I am honored for representing the veteran of World War II, 100th Infantry Battalion, Military Intelligence Service for Combat Duty. 70 years have passed since we served the United States military service. Since then, we have been in many wars where our country participated, participated in the Vietnam War. I'm also being honored here today among with us. This is a deep-thought thanks to the city of Los Angeles and bestowed this honor upon us today. Thank you, city of Los Angeles, Mayor Garcetti, Agent Pacific Islander Heritage Month Committee, and Councilmember of this wonderful honor. I thank you.
We can, Channel 35, can you just pan out and get the front row of our war heroes here? Please stand and be recognized, the entire group. Colleagues, it's great, with great honor that we present the Hope Award to a member of our own city family, Sharon So, the new Chief Legislative Analyst. Sharon So, help me welcome our colleague, Sharon So, this year's Hope Award.
Yes, Sharon.
Sharon, Sharon has an inspiring story. She's a first-generation Chinese-American and a native Southern Californian. Her parents immigrated from Canton, China. Her father proudly served with, our sister city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Her father proudly served with the United States Army during World War II. Her career with the city of Los Angeles spans over 32 years, with the last 20 years in service to the City Council. Prior to this, Sharon worked in other city offices, including the Office of City Administrative Officer, the Department of General Services, and the Department of Water and Power. She is recognized as one of the most, the foremost experts on the city budget process, having been involved in every city budget process since 1987. I was in the seventh grade then, Sharon, I love you. We are so thankful, Sharon. I think I just got cut, Mr. Mayor, to some of my budget items requests. But we're here to thank you, Sharon, for your continued service to not only this body, but the entire city family. Help me welcome Sharon So, this year's Hope Award recipient.
Go, Sharon, go.
City Council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Controller, thank you so very much for this great, great honor. I want to say dojha, dojha, dojha to all of the city family, to the citizens of L.A., to all of my coworkers, because without you, I wouldn't be here. I thank you for this great opportunity to serve you.
This, of course, on behalf of the entire city. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Sharon So, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. And lastly, it's with great joy and pleasure that I introduce the Friendship Award to an individual who's led an effort in my district to restore the beautiful Korean Friendship Bell, my friend Ernest Lee. Ernest is one of the co-founders of the Korean Friendship Preservation Committee and has been serving as its Executive Director since 2006. I've seen Ernest at a number of events and functions in my district, pushing for dollars and fundraising to preserve our historic Korean Friendship Bell, recognizing the need for an organized effort, a long-term vision, the community and community outreach efforts for successful preservation of the Korean Friendship Bell and its legacies. He has worked not only to bring together various Korean-American organizations across the generational groups, but also has made persistent efforts to reach out to groups and, out community groups and residents. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome Ernest Lee.
Wow. I am both deeply honored and humble to accept this award today, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that this would not have been possible were it not for the 32 other members of the Korean Friendship Bell Preservation Committee that have worked tirelessly since 2006 to, for the single purpose of restoring and preserving both the bell and the pavilion and its legacy of friendship and honor. Late Justice Thurgood Marshall famously said that when asked what he would like on his tombstone, he replied that he wanted it to be said that he did what he could with what he had, which is a great reminder that public service is really not a privilege of the wealthy and the powerful. the wealthy and the powerful, but every one of us volunteers could do a little something in our community to give back and life better for those who follow us. So again, thank you very much for this honor, and I will share this with the rest of the committee.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of members, would it be appropriate to have them speak at this time?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I'd like to start off with Mr. Mitchell Englander.
Thank you, or you can call me Ing for short. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Busacaino for bringing this on today. Just a pop quiz real quick, maybe the mayor might know some of these answers. If not, I'm sure Tom Labonge can fill us in. Which council district has the most Cambodian Americans? CD1, Councilmember Sadio. Malaysians and Japanese, Councilmember Bonin. Bhutanese, Councilmember Coretts. Vietnamese, Councilmember Bloomingfield. Samoans, 15. All right, who, which council district has the most Koreans? No, no, not 12. Mr. Wesson. All right, the Philippines. CD13, O'Farrell. And collectively, though, the most APIs in the district, the most Asian Pacific Islanders, which council district is home to the greatest community, to the most APIs in the City of LA? CD12, yes, my district, and proud of that. Very good. So, Los Angeles is home to many distinct cultures, histories, and languages, and it's this diversity that fuels our economy, enriches our neighborhoods, and spurs our creativity. That's what makes LA absolutely the greatest city in the world. And I want to congratulate our honorees today for their contributions to the City of LA. Ernest Lee, your passion, your leadership, restoring one of the most LA's treasured historical cultural monuments, that cultural monument, which is absolutely fantastic, did a great job. Really, truly thank you for that. To our very first Asian-American and Women Chief Legislative Analyst and a dear friend, Sharon So, thank you so much. This is so fitting, particularly now as, as today might be Friday, but we know you're going to be 48 hours around the clock over the next couple of days on the budget. It's a good time to take a step back and relax and be appreciated for everything that you bring to the city, so thank you for that. Our Far East Movement, demonstrating the talents of Asian-Americans, topping the charts like a G6, and of course, Joelle for steadfast dedication and serving the community, and finally, our World War II veterans, our true heroes. Their courage and on behalf of our country is unmatched. They deserve a huge round of applause. Thank you. I also want to recognize on my staff, John Lee, my Chief of Staff, Semi Park, my Legislative Deputy, Hannah Lee, my Planning Deputy, Brian O, my Transportation Deputy, all in high, very high-ranking positions and bring so much, not only to my office, to our community, but to the City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, and God bless you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. The beauty of Los Angeles is its people, and I thank all the people that I've been able to live with for 60 years, being born in this city, growing up in Silver Lake, having Hudeo Matsonaga, my Scoutmaster, having him take us up to Owens Valley and climb Mount Whitney, having to then, years later, get fortunate to be elected and represent the City of Los Angeles when the Department of Water and Power turned over the land to the National Park Service to make it a monument, what was Manzanar. And there in the crowd was my Scoutmaster, who had a great professional career at MWD, but also was at Manzanar. How life has a circle, and the circle of life is so special, and the circle of Los Angeles is so special. I had the greatest API, and everybody else was in my district before we district, and I want to let you know, Mr. Englander, so I got cut up the worst, but that's okay, because we got our hands out for everybody to help. And I want to get a shout-out to our Sister City Program, Nagoya, Japan, First Sister City, Los Angeles had, 1959, Busan, 1971, Mumbai, 1972, then we go Taipei, '79, very quickly, Guangzhou, '81, Jakarta, Indonesia, '90, Makati, '92, all of us together makes a greater city. So, and I see Ray Chan here, stand up, Ray Chan, just appointed head of Building and Safety, good job. And Sharon, Sharon, I'll take all the money, I'll take all the money that Joe's going to lose, because he was in 3rd grade, he didn't know arithmetic then, he doesn't know it now, I'll take his cut. But anyway, this is why we do it, and I want to thank the mayor and his team, and Joe, and Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Controller. We take a moment to celebrate diversity, because if we celebrate diversity, we are better for our lives. Congratulations, everybody, and especially the veterans.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. As someone who represents Thai Town, part of Koreatown, and historic Filipino Town, I am very honored to represent such a diverse district, and I always say that the 13th District is a microcosm of the melting pot that is all of Los Angeles, and it is indeed the diversity of this city that makes it so great. So, I just want to give shout-outs as well to Ray Chan, our Building and Safety General Manager, and our honorees, of course. Ernest Lee, you talked about volunteers. The City of Los Angeles depends on our volunteer corps to make us who we are, and we will continue doing that, so I commend you. That's what it's all about, to make this city work. Deborah Sa, congratulations. Sharon So, we're all so honored and thrilled that you're our incoming CLA. To the Far East Movement, I flew like a G6 in the fall of 2010, like I can't even tell you. And that is, that is the song of the decade to me, what a great, incredible song. To Joel Jacinto, my dear friend, as Executive Director of the largest serving nonprofit, serving mostly Filipino-Americans in the entire United States, housed in the great 13th District, your work over the years has made all the difference in the world in, in the City of Los Angeles and the 13th District, so I thank you. And to our World War II vets represented by Sam Fuji Kawa, I think we all bow to you on this day, and thank you very deeply and profoundly for the service you've given to the country and to the world, to make the world a better place. So, thank you. Well done, Joe, thank you.
And, and I have to, hats off to you, Mr. Buscaino, phenomenal job, and I'd like to mention Michael Bya, my office, and Trudy Abraham, for all of the work they did to assist you, but this is...
It was a great partnership with your office, and Becca Lu and Sarah in my office really collaborated with CD10. I also want to recognize our General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood and Power, Gracey Lu, who's hiding behind the pillar, who's very humbled. Grace, thanks so much for all that you do for us, and we invite everyone to join us to celebrate our Heritage Month in the South Lawn, there's going to be food, entertainment, and everyone's welcome, thank you.
And Mr. Buscaino, if I could ask, we'll take a quick, two-minute recess, it's a request from Ms. Martinez, we take a photo, we'd like to invite Mike and Ron to take it as well, so council members and the City Controller and City Attorney, if we can meet at the center table.
All right.
Just quickly. Thank you, okay. If I could have everyone take their seats? If I could have everyone take their seats? Many of you noticed that we just took a photograph, and I'd like to defer to Nuri Martinez to explain why and the importance of the photograph that we just took. Mr. Nuri Martinez.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, I apologize, we quickly jumped into the picture because folks needed to get to other commitments, but thank you so much, colleagues, for taking the picture. This basically represents the 30 female students in the country of Nigeria that were kidnapped about three weeks ago, and this will symbolize that we stand with our girls and we expect them to come back safe and sound, and the City of Los Angeles stands with them, so thank you very much for allowing us to do this, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, if we could recess this meeting and move into the special meeting?
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield, Bonner, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weiser, Coretts, Corcoran, Labonge, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's go to item 11.
And, Mr. President, items 11 and 12 are items for which public carings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if I could have Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sax, Dr. Williams, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Baraja, so you guys would start making your way up. We're on item 11 in the special meeting. Mr. Wood, Dr. Williams, if you're ready, come on, please, sir. Dr. Tom Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, but not representing anyone. Real question, freedom of speech. It's a real question. Any speech doesn't mean only that speech that is true, that speech that is accurate. It can be anything, as long as it doesn't say fire or cause bodily harm. So it's a real question as to whether Rialto is expressing freedom of speech. It's a sensitive issue. The Armenians have a similar issue. Right now, in Syria, similar issues, freedom of speech. So it's difficult to figure out what to do. Maybe I'm not sensitive, but I do remember the first movies of the Holocaust that were provided in the United States back in the early 40s. Question as to, what do we do about it? Do we allow freedom of speech? We have that obligation, so I would highly recommend not to go forward with this motion. Freedom of speech is the first and foremost. I'm a paleontologist, and every year I have to deal with, is evolution real? Well, for me, it is, but I respect those people who have differing opinions, and therefore we should respect differing opinions about the Holocaust, about the Armenian genocide, about what's going on in Syria right now. We haven't made a motion regarding Syria. Thousands have died there, not millions, but thousands. Isn't that enough? Freedom of speech, number one. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
Item 11, has you heard the sense of shit of you at all? It all, it all matters, it all matters. We're all Americans here, and Mr. Englander made a good point about that, we're all living in the largest soup on LA, but to all of you today, the tragedy is this, our First Amendment right, Ralph Brown Act, 54950 to 54963, state ruling, senators, thank you, you must continue to amend our rights and keep us under the First Amendment right to speak here in public comment without the interruptions that many of you have heard based on our council, who say that we're speaking out of the agenda item. But again, Mr. Obama made a very excellent point. Without speech, we are no one. Without speech, remember that point he pointed out in his talk this morning on the news? Very excellent point, Mr. Obama, thank you for that. We have to speak on the real issues, and the real issue today is our VAs, recognition of our VAs, and not another Holocaust. So I say to you about this sensitive issue, get to business, get to business now, Mr. Coretts, because we all suffered from the Holocaust, it's still a memory in all of us, we're drenched in the memories of it all. So to all of you in Los Angeles, all you Angelinos, keep our First Amendment right alive, Mr. Labonge, keep the Brown Act available to anyone in any public meeting, as long as it's on the agenda, for we Americans have the right to speak, we Americans have the right to hear.
That completes your comment on the issue, thank you.
We Americans are all American, thank you.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns the Rialto Unified School District and the assignment concerning the Holocaust. Did it really happen, or was it a fake? Okay, they made a mistake, they didn't understand, I'm sure they were generous.
I'm sure they were gentiles. We don't need to pile on on them, okay? And I'm saying that because in 1880, my great-grandfather, Leo Berger, said, "I'm getting my Jewish ass out of Budapest, because I believe in the future, everybody here will die." And you know what? They laughed at him. "Oh, Leo, we have it wonderful here in Budapest." And he got his ass out here. The only thing, only slip-up when he came to America is that one of his daughter married a Christian. That's why I'm here. And that's why I'm saying that Rialto School Board, you don't need to condemn them. They condemn themselves. And I just want everyone to understand that the reason I stand here is because of Leo Berger. And he's coming to America to escape the Holocaust. And I want to tell you, he had a real big Jew lip on him. But only, I'm second only to my, uh, great-grandfather, Leo Berger, with a Jew lip. And 6 million Jews died because they didn't listen to people like Leo Berger. And my great-grandfather spent the Holocaust working on his tan, retired, in Coney Island, okay? So, I'm telling you right now, the Jews here are the ones who listened and got the hell out. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, genocide. What about Iraq? What about Africa?
Please, sir, speak on Rialto School District. The motion before you. Continue.
Well, it concerns education. If we're really sensitive about an issue called genocide, then we have to encompass the education as preventing further genocide. And that's what's happening. Ukraine, everywhere. So, what happened? You got a few people who made a statement, who wanted to challenge students to think. And what happened? The society, which is collapsing today, attacked a group of individuals, all because they issued a question that wasn't in the manner to which it satisfied certain individuals. So, if you really want people to know how genocide happens, instead of just showing the victims of genocide, then this is the issue. That's the issue. You want to bring up genocide? Bring it up in the context as it is happening today. Otherwise, you would never, ever, 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 ever learn.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Here we go. The Lords of the Flies getting involved in petty ridiculousness. You know, it was interesting today in your council chambers. You know, it all's big. You guys have done a lot to discuss, uh, voter rights. But we just heard a little earlier, and it was applauded, Mr. Sadio had his seatmate vote for him. That's illegal. Having somebody else cast votes in your favor or for you? That's illegal. That's voter fraud.
Speak on the issue, Mr. Sacks.
I am speaking on it, because you're sensitive to what you want to be sensitive to. But the reality is, it's insanity that you're sensitive to. Instead of reality being, you should be sensitive to reality instead of insanity. That's a choice you make. And that's a choice that needs to be discussed, because this is insane. And you're all jumping up and down about it. But the reality of a budget and voter fraud and, and the programs that, the city of LA being such a wonderful city of angels, yet you had a report that said 40% of the population is living in poverty or near poverty. That's some kind of...
Speak on the issue, Arnold.
I'm speaking on the issue, sir.
Not about the school district.
Be sensitive to reality and not be sensitive to fantasies that... Or what? Progressive for who? Or what? Progressive for what? Start with voter fraud. You just had a celebration about it. Discuss that as, as getting an apology for the public, because they believe voting is important. And yet, we find out, and you do a discussion...
Juan Icahla, next speaker. Juan Icahla.
My opinion as a teacher is this: you challenge the students. You find out reality. Did the Holocaust happen or didn't happen? It's just a question. You research it. As a kid, you don't know. So, we're talking about nothing, really. It's, uh, this is the kind of, the way this society reacts to everything. We make a big deal out of nothing. Look, that was a valid question. And I would like to know, as a kid, what the hell went on before I was born? 20 million Russians died, and they're not complaining. 6 million Jews died, and they are complaining. They should complain. Everybody should complain. There should be no discrimination. You don't like Mexicans. And that's a reality, you know? You don't like Mexicans, you took their land, and you're sitting here discussing, uh, genocide of other people. Come on. You did the same thing to the Indians, to the Mexicans, to everybody that came along. And, uh, guess what? The Holocaust did happen, and it will keep on happening with this kind of attitude. Because you do not care about people. All you care is about money.
Mr. Carras.
Thank you, Mr. President. With some irony, uh, a few weeks ago, we commemorated the Holocaust here in City Hall, not only with, uh, a moving ceremony, but with a exhibit that's still present, uh, on our bridge between the two city halls. And we had a speaker at that dedication who talked about surviving the concentration camps and finding that he was the only one of his family. The other 39 members of his family had died. This is a well-documented occurrence. I don't believe that any of the Holocaust deniers publicly actually believed that the Holocaust didn't happen. I think it's, it's a mission for themselves, a mission of hate and antisemitism, and a step in that direction is an attempt at denying the Holocaust. And it would be one thing if the assignment was: determine whether the Holocaust really happened or whether it was made up. But it wasn't written that way. I don't remember the exact words, but it was in essence: "Did the Holocaust happen? Or was it a creation of wealthy Jews for their own benefit?" And that was more like what we call in, in political polling, a push question. So, by having a poll and putting it out there, you're in essence trying to make the argument. And I think this is a way to teach the children that were given this assignment that, yes, maybe there not only wasn't a Holocaust, but it was created by the very people who lost 6 million of their relatives. I think that is outrageous. That is going too far, even by the greatest stretch of the imagination. And I think we have to column on it. And I don't know that I blame the Rialto Board of Education. I suspect they weren't aware of it until it happened. But any way in which this was allowed to happen and have no consequences is absolutely outrageous. You can't be teaching K through 12 kids that the Holocaust didn't happen, or even hinting at the possibility that it was a creation of Jews for their own benefit. That is antisemitism of the most extreme. And I think it is appropriate that we take a stand on this and, and pass this resolution to call the folks that did this on what happened.
Thank you, Mr. Carras. No applause, please, Mr. Bloomingfield. Luis.
Thank you, Mr. Carras, for bringing this up. I do think it's appropriate to bring up. You know, 6 million Jews were systematically murdered. 5 million political dissidents, POWs, Slavs, homosexuals, were, were murdered. This is a fact. This is not an issue for discussion. This, you know, you can have issues for discussion, but when you start questioning facts, you give, you breathe life into some of the, the killers and what they wanted to do. Himmler, in a famous, uh, 1943 speech, talked about how, in the midst of the Holocaust, how this would never be remembered because the records would be burned and people would forget. It is inexcusable, and it is absolutely right for us to call, uh, them on the carpet when this kind of thing happens. I shouldn't be shocked when I hear about this thing. I was a former member of the ADL Board, and I would hear about these things. But I still, I still get shocked when I hear about it, and we still need to call it out, uh, because the Holocaust deniers are out there. They have an antisemitic agenda. Their agenda is not about issues and discussion. Their agenda is about denying facts. Uh, and we just, we need to, anytime it comes out, we need to nip it in the bud. And so, I thank you, Mr. Carras, for bringing this forward. And the Rialto School District should be commended for taking appropriate action now. And hopefully, they're going to accept the Weisenthal's gracious, uh, offer to give them sensitivity training and that kind of thing. And that's the steps that we need to do. Vigilance is the way that we prevent these kinds of horrific things from happening again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.... No applause. Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Labonge. I just support this, and I thank you, Mr. Carras, always, for, uh, all many issues that you bring up. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, we're going to move to, uh, item 12. Mr. Clerk, I have cards. I've got Mr. Walsh, uh, Mr. Sacks, and Icahla. Mr. Icahla on item 12.
Hand for clarification. There is a substitute motion has been submitted and circulated for that matter.
All right. Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, well, we, uh, we in the public haven't seen the substitute motion. The Brown Act requires that a copy be given to, uh, to each member of the public. This concerns extending the termination date of the Reform Commission for Elections by three weeks. Three weeks. I mean, this is, this is earth-shattering. This is incredibly important. You heard when Mickey Kanter and Mickey Mouse got up here and talked about election reform. They said, uh, "November. Have it all in November. Bury it on the bottom of the agenda, uh, of the ballot. No one will pay attention, and they'll drop off and not even vote for it." So, uh, this is a waste of time. I don't know what, uh, this sneaky little amendment is. But, uh, believe me, I don't get up here to waste your time or my time. When I'm finished speaking on a subject, I leave. Take your minute back. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Sacks or Mr. Icahla?
Yes, thank you. Good, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. What, what can be accomplished with this three-week extension? I believe when the last mayor's race was held, the loser, Wendy Gruel, was like millions and millions of dollars in debt. What will come out of this three-week extension? And while you're extending this Election Reform Commission, where are we at with the Ethics Commission and its reports regarding, um, investigations of council people? I know that, um, previous councilman from Ms. Martinez's district was under investigation. It's been four years, and there's been no judgment on that case yet. It doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense at all. More reality versus fantasy.
Here we are again, um, uh, reforming, uh, election things. When I ran for city councilman, District 11, Venice Beach, my votes were not counted. You said I only got three votes. So, how clean are your elections? They are not clean at all. You count the votes any way you want to, anytime you want to. And, uh, George Bush got elected the same way. They miscounted the votes. So, what kind of a system are we talking about? Let's see, who are we going to put today? Do you like that guy? No. Do you like that other guy? No. Uh, we, the city council, we, the, uh, election people, we will count the votes any way we want to so we can get the results that we need to get so we can continue the system of oppression going. All it is, is a system of oppression. And by the way, Bloomingfield and Carras, when you call yourself the chosen people, you're automatically discriminating against everybody else. So, you know, paybacks are a bitch. Paybacks are a bitch.
Mr. Labonge.
Alan. No, I hit my knuckles.
Okay, then let's, uh, prepare to, uh, vote on this. There, in fact, Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding we have two votes.
Yes, sir.
Where it relates to this item. If you could explain.
Uh, the first vote is on whether to, uh, accept the substitute, uh, motion, motion Wesson, Martinez. Uh, and then, uh, subsequent to that, uh, to vote on...
So, let's vote on the first vote. Uh, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's on the substitution, right?
Yes, sir.
So, now, let's actually vote on the, what remains. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Very good, sir. Would you like to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yeah, let's adjourn and return to the, uh, regular meeting.
Very good, sir.
And that brings us to what item?
Mr. President, we have, uh, items seven, eight, nine, and 10,
All right, let's, uh, go to item seven, then. We'll just try to take them in order. I have Mr. Walsh. I have Mr. Sacks. I have Mr. Herman. I have Mr. Barajas. And I have Mr. Icahla. Please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns handing out money to various poverty pimps. And, uh, I don't mind poverty pimps getting a little bit of money, you know? But, uh, poor Asian-American drug abuse only gets $7,000, while, uh, something called People Coordinating Services, whatever the hell that is, gets $236,000. I think when you, Alma Family, $121,000. When you're giving, uh, these awards out, this is, uh, giving up $1 million. Kush &amp; Company Incorporated, $45,000. Developing Options, have no idea what these things are. All I know is they're getting plenty of money. That gets $46,000. New Directions for youth, $75,000. JPZ, $63,000. Please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sacks, followed by Mr. Herman, and Barajas. Mr. Barajas. Go, go ahead, Arnold.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. And it is funding for the mayor's 2014 Summer Night Lights program, $1 million. But according to part two of this, um, it mentions, oh, it's only $893,000. Your prior-year encumbrances are $1 million. But your staffing, from your budget hearing on April 1st, 2014, was for an extra $415,000. That's not included in here. And just out of curiosity, about 10 items, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 items down, the Child and Family Guidance Center is receiving a whopping $73.96. eight, nine items down, the Child and Family Guidance Center is receiving a whopping $73.96. The flowers on your desk cost more than $73.96. What are they going to do with $73.96? What big plans? Is that lights for 10 minutes? Lights out. Oh, you know who used to say that? That was Sean Merriman, "Lights Out" from San Diego. But where about the $415,000 from prior year encumbrances? You know, they used to do that in the county with the community block development grant funds where they'd roll over funding and you'd want to say, "Well, if they didn't spend it in the prior years, how come? Isn't there a need for it?" And there's always a need for these programs. So, why wasn't the money, the $1 million spent? Fiscal responsibility from the city of L.A., that's an oxymoron. Emphasis on moron.
Mr. Herman, Mr. Barajas, Mr. Akala.
Item seven, I'll keep it short. Relative to the authorization to amend a contract with the Los Angeles Conservation Corpse, LACC, in support of the mayor's 2014 Summer Night. Summer nights, summer nights, we all need summer nights. So, let's spend a few dollars of our time, L.A., and all of you Angelenos, on a summer night, on a summer night. I'll hold my time to one minute. Thank you. Summer night.
Mr. Barajas, followed by Juan Akala.
So, my Summer Night Lights, I live in Jose Ruizar's district in Ramona Gardens, and I have to tell you that these programs, people say, "Well, it's for the kids. It's for, you know, getting them out of gang activities and..." Okay, so, fine. Here's my question. What happens when you put these kids in Summer Night Lights? That is to say, in a place where the intention at first is not being achieved? That is to say that if these Summer Night Lights is just a bunch of movie activities, music, games, but has no relative to their education, then it really is a fraud. You might as well build a Colosseum, put all the kids in there, and the way things are going, you could have disgusting all over the place. Because that's what these kids are doing. When they socialize with each other in these places, that's exactly what they're doing. It's disgusting. The other point that I'll make is the very fact that on this issue, you don't even support the de-escalation of drugs. Asian-American drug abuse program, $7,000. I mean, where is the priority in getting rid of the shit?
All right, let's read the list a little bit here. Developing Options, $46,000, blah, blah, blah. USC, Get Set.
Get Set.
$15,000, blah, blah, blah. Kush, isn't that marijuana? $45,000. Asian-American drug abuse, dude, the Chinese have been abusing drugs for thousands of years. Now you're, now you're funding an anti-abuse program? Community Building Incorporated, oh, let's build. What are we building? Everybody's homeless. Watts Labor Community Action, $4,000, well, $54,000. You know what I, if I had that million dollars, what I would do? I would replace city council with that money.
Mr. Buscaino, is this an accident?
No, I just want to rise and--
Oh, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, Rice colleagues have supported this, cited before you, and contrary to what our friends are saying in public comment, if you look at our historic crime trends and our historic lows in homicides, we attribute the success to our reduction in violent crime to programs like this before you, like the Summer Night Light Program. And as a police officer, senior lead officer, Normandale Park is assigned to the Summer Night Light Program. There are Normandale Park and other parks across the district and 15th that these programs work. We need to continue programs like the Summer Night Light Program and also focus on public-private partnerships. Our friends in, in the business community who are continuing to give and support these programs. So, I offer an aye vote. I, and I ask you to support this item as we move forward. Just wanted to stand and, I know, we hear a lot from public comment, but I'm sure not one soul that you heard before you even visited a Summer Night Light Program that's been effective and productive in our respective communities. Thank you.
Well, Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. President, thank you. And Mr. Buscaino, it came to the attention of me just now, and it came to the attention of one of the nonprofits that serves the 13th District and beyond, the Bresi Foundation, that they have some uncertainty about this, the disencumbered funds from fiscal 1213 of $63,000 and maybe depending on these funds. It just came to my attention minutes ago, and they are checking with their office on exactly their understanding of this. So, I just wanted to say for the record that it has felt that they're still depending on these funds, quite frankly, and it just came to my attention. So, I don't know if there is a way to postpone this until Tuesday, if that's a possibility.
Why don't I do this? Why don't I just hold it for now? Let's consider the, I mean, let's continue the conversation and hopefully we can work it out before the end of today's business.
Terrific.
So, we will hold that now and we'll move to item eight. We're on item eight. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Herman. Mr. Akala. And Mr. Sacks. This is item eight.
Mr. DeLeon, Senator DeLeon, in due respect, we see that we have here a motion for funding for safe neighborhood and parks. So, I'm asking you to investigate Hazard Park. Hazard Park in the community of one of our constituents who sits here today and spoke about it earlier. These plans for Norfolk Street at 90033, 2230 Norfolk, N-O-R-F-O-L-K Street in Boyle Heights. Fix the problem, please. Thank you. One minute.
Mr. Akala, followed by Mr. Sacks.
We do need safe parks, obviously, and my feeling about the whole situation here is that we should have places for people to live so they don't have to hang around parks bothering other people, you know? If we had a place for everyone without a landlord--
Stay on item. That's not the item.
The item is, there's too many people living in these parks. If they had a place to live, it would be a lot safer.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. You know, the county has a safe parks proposition, 1996, that they somehow managed to subdivide. Now, this legislation wants funding for safe neighborhood parks, rivers, and coastal protection, but it doesn't really mention how this will be subdivided out and how this will be regulated and how it will be funded for each of these individual yet different entities. The county's proposition, 1996 Safe Parks Proposition, it also includes funding for the beaches, for public beaches to be used. But in an amazing coincidence, the County Transportation Commission, the MTA, actually cuts bus service for low-income people to use the beach. There's no bus service to go to the county beaches over the weekend, yet the people in the county and the cities pay for this proposition funding for beaches to be kept clean and safe. So, what, what--
On topic.
What protections in this bill will be afforded to have safe and sane usage for all the people in the county? Just as another example, you know, maybe you've heard a little bit about what's going on in the South Bay. One city wants to deny oil and they're getting the city--
Stay on the issue.
I'm using this as an example, sir. Using, they want to deny, they passed a bill to allow drilling and then they turned around and vetoed it. So, the state is going to acknowledge, give them $17 million in a loan. Yet another city, the--
That's not on topic. Thanks, Arnold. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this issue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We can go now to item nine. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Akala.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns the Swansea Park Senior Apartments and floating bonds to pay for them. The project itself is an excellent project. However, I would ask everybody to Google Sacramento Bee and Dan Walters, who is not on his knees, in the Lewinsky position when it comes to the city of Los Angeles. He's called this a dirt box, the politics. And check on the bond debt. We have hundreds of billions of dollars over the next 30 or 40 years of unsecured bond debt. This is not John Walsh, this is the Sacramento Bee. And all Brown cares about is getting elected. Four years from now, he'll leave it office in his 80s, an octogenarian, and the whole state is going to fall apart. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Akala.
L.A. Weekly, the money pit. L.A. Weekly, the money pit. Mr. Mickey Cantor discussed transparency, how the best use of appropriations for not creating a fraud and waste accountability issue here in Los Angeles. Swansea Park Apartments, we need them. We need them for the elderly. We need them for folks who want to live in Los Angeles and party in L.A. Live, because this is the greatest city, second from other cities, are doing well better than our economy here today. But let me stick to topic, a conversation here. Mickey Cantor said transparency should be the utmost expectancy--
Stay on the topic, Mr. Herman.
Okay. So, the point here is bond policies to allow the California statewide Communities Development Authority to issue the bonds on behalf of the project. I say to all of you in Los Angeles, we ask that there be this in motion. The motion to keep accuracy, accountability, and scales of measurement when it comes to itemizing the effectiveness, the effectiveness, the effectiveness of how we plan to use, Mr. O'Farrell Sadio, for the use of Swansea Park Senior Apartments, every dollar amount accountable. Because without accountability, we are only creating a house deficit, a ceiling collapse in Los Angeles.
Speak to the item.
So, we, we as state taxpayers, stakeholders, is this, bond policies should be investigated according to how this local government finances these projects and secures that the public has transparency and that this horseshoe be accountable to the expenditure of waste, fraud, and abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akala.
Well, even the, even the cameraman here discriminates against the people he puts--
Stay, no, no, stay on the topic.
Oh, really, yeah. The topic is housing. Gee, how are we going to build this housing? We're going to put everybody in a little--
That's not the topic.
--birdcage, right?
That's, that's not the topic.
Well, that's what those projects are.
That's not the topic. Stay on the topic.
All right. Motion, O'Farrell Sadio, Relative to Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, TFR, Hearing Regarding the Swains Park Senior Apartments, Phase II Housing Project Located at 5151 Romaine Street, Romania, Romaine Street, Los Angeles, that would be in Hollywood, yeah. Anyway, or near, nearby.
Stay on the subject.
Yeah. Senior housing is for the birds, it's not for people. You put people in cages.
Stay on the topic.
Everyone should have a place to live, an independent little place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Akala. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll.
Pardon me, sir.
Mr. Clerk?
Motion 9A, amending motion 9A, has been circulated and is now before counsel for consideration.
Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We can now move to item 10. John Walsh, Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Sacks pass, or no, Mr. Sacks and Juan Akala on item 10. Oh, Mr. Akala's out of time. So, Mr. Sacks, I'm told you have one minute.
I know. One minute. Yes, thank you. Again, this refers to a final track map and the Quimby fees associated with the final track map. And I would just bring to your attention that when the county mentions Quimby fees, the County Board of Supervisors in Los Angeles, they mention them as fees that are in lieu of payment. And when they become in lieu of payment for something, that means they may never get spent. So, what are these Quimby fees for the city in lieu of payment of? And we also know, just as an example, the DWP makes a payment to the sewer city, in lieu of property tax. And we don't know the differential between what they would actually pay in property tax and the payment that they make to the city when they do their transfer. So, we don't know the actual financial--
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if we can now go back to item seven. I believe all of the concerns have been satisfied. We're on, Mr. O'Farrell, you wanted to make a statement? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Really quickly, if we could have Director Ann Tremblay up for just a quick moment to answer a question. I do not want to hold this up, but, thank you.
She's right here with us.
I don't know if you've heard what came to my attention moments ago, Ms. Tremblay or not, but, and I just spoke with Bresi on the phone just now, and they feel that they've submitted invoices against this appropriation from two fiscal years ago and they have not been, this is just initial, so I think there's some confusion that we have to sort out. They feel that they haven't been reimbursed against this appropriation from two years ago. So, if you could report back to my office once you look into, from your perspective, if there are any mistakes or inaccuracies that we could sort out before Tuesday in case this is a matter that could harm them financially with the services they provide. case this is a matter that could harm them financially with the services they provide.
Certainly, absolutely. I can talk with the accounting team and see if we can figure out what may have been submitted. Perhaps it was submitted after this motion was prepared, so I'll have to look into the timing of it and what was submitted so we can resolve the issue. But I'll certainly do that ASAP.
Thank you. I'm happy to organize a conference call with their program director and their finance people, so we can get the facts figured out. And that way, we can move forward with this and then make a correction if necessary on Tuesday. I understand administratively, we would be able to achieve that.
Thank you. And you are accurate with that.
We can reconsider. Thank you.
So let's--
Thank you.
Prepare to vote. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, forthwith? No, we can't. No, we can't. So let's just hold on it, on to it. Mr. Labons, there are two items that we've already moved on, but you want to do what with them?
I want to continue them a week because I want water power here, just so we can get on the record some improvements. It will be modest time from the--
Those are items four and five?
Correct.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration for items four and five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And we will continue those for a week from today. Which, Mr. Clerk, would bring us to what date?
May 16, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, what is, so we, without objection, those items are continued. What's before this body?
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment for items not on its agenda.
Okay, let's go to Candido Mares is here. Good to see you. Dr. Tom Williams, Brian Barajas.
Mr. West.
No, I'll get--
Can he go first?
Why don't you just come, I don't, I can't hear you from there, we're not gonna--
May I follow him, sir? Because I want to thank you for their hard work. If I, with your permission, if I may, sir.
Well, what's the, again, I'm trying to find his card.
I was last to come in, so if, with your permission--
No, you're first on the list. So I tell you what, why don't you sit down for a moment? Why don't I go with Dr. Williams?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I see you, Herbert, Bryant Barajas.
Oh, what I hear.
Please come forward. Brian, come forward.
Is it a minute? Two, all right. Okay. Now, my background, and this is why I bring up this topic about education for the children, it's classical. And there's a deep education that people have to understand. You can kill someone by listening to a type of music. You call it rock, you can call it rap, you can call it anything that's not Bach, Mozart, And this is the tragedy of our, not just our culture, and when I say our culture, I mean the American culture. Because you got a bunch of fascists who don't even know how to educate a child. That's the problem. And that's why I keep addressing it in the context that I address it, because you cannot teach anybody anything, even, even the older people, they become stubborn at some point. And you have to have the mind of a, of the quality of learning, which every child has to learn from the beginning. But we have a culture hell-bent on destroying the children, and this is what I address today. This is the key to preventing genocide in a society which doesn't have the mental capacity to understand how it's happening today. So, I say, therefore, when I mention impeachment and people say, no, I say, you're wrong. And that's a fact.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I think I've got it. Mr. Thompson, followed by Mr. Candido Mares. Now, is that the way to go?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you again.
How you doing, Mr. President?
Fine.
City council members, my name is Herbert Thompson, I'm a crime victims advocate and a civil rights activist. I'm here today to talk about the Korma Community Youth Culture Center Victims Rights Program. Our focus is on stopping the bullying. We have a campaign that we launched over three years ago, fighting bullying in schools, against teachers, different organizations. We fought against the Clippers organization, charter schools, and have had a success rate of winning. We are operating on a no budget, no support from our city councils and our neighborhoods. We do everything voluntarily. Today, I'm here to try to look for support and funding for our program so we can continue our outreach programs and to launch and to get more recognition for our Stop the Bullying We have issues, we're working with our walls due to the city maliciously evicting us, yet now where they evicted from, they being evicted also, now they calling us, now they want us to be a voice for them. One of the stitches that worked there, a lot of the programs that's in the valley is coming to us for support. They didn't stand by us when we was fighting the city. And now, I'm here to ask the city if they can help us far as city buildings, information, what we can obtain, what we can rent or purchase, but we do need, do need space for a community center.
Okay, good to see you, Mr. Thompson. Candido?
Thank you, Mr. President. Candido Mares, proud resident of the 12th District. And I want to help, thank Mr. Herbert Thompson and Mr. Leroy Jeters from their victim right group, because anyone can be bullied. And to give you an example, three years when I was down and out and very ill, I in fact became a victim of bullying, and it was Mr. Thompson and Mr. Jeters who came to my aid to stop that. So again, thank you, sir, for that. I'm here today, Mr. President, because I want to thank the council members who have come to the aid of the San Fernando Rescue Mission. In my 40 years of being in Los Angeles, the thing that I enjoy and that I appreciate the most is working at the San Fernando Rescue Mission. I've been involved with them for over 20 years, and currently, we're helping them separate the food and the bread and making sure that it gets out to those who are in need. And to me, sir, that is the greater and best gift I could ever do and the best feeling that I can receive, because when you help others who are in need, it's just an amazing thing. So again, it's not that I don't enjoy this, but when you help people, it's very important. One of the things, we helped them with washers and dryers, we've helped them with, we actually connected them to Walmarts, Mr. President. So when you see myself, Mr. Camara, and Mr. Piper, that's what we're doing these days, sir, we're helping. I would like to ask the council members from the San Fernando Valley to ask the neighborhood councils, if we had every neighborhood council in the San Fernando Valley donate just $500, Mr. President. Five hundred, we could probably raise about $25,000. What people don't realize is the San Fernando Rescue Mission is the last hope for a lot of people. And unless you've been there, and unless you've seen someone on their knees, and children who have nothing, and people who are sleeping in cots in a small room, that's what the San Fernando Rescue Mission was able to provide. So, Mr. President, I hope that you'll speak to the valley council person, ask them if they could ask their neighborhood councils to donate $500, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you for your--
No applause, come on, no applause. John, you want to come forward? Camara?
Mr. President--
Followed by Mr. Dr. Williams. Yes, Mr. Labons.
Mr. President, if you, for a moment here, we have the Westwood Charter School, third graders, give them a hand, stand up. On behalf of Mr. Coretts, we want to welcome them and on their day here at City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Okay, wave, kids. All right. All right, Mr. Shhh. Teachers, no more sugar. John.
Okay, here we go. Hi, good morning, Mr. President, council members. John Camara, Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and St. Elizabeth Church in Van Nuys. I want to thank all the council members who have come to the aid of the San Fernando Rescue Mission. I have had a long-term relationship with them in helping people in need whose last hope, which has been the Rescue Mission. A fire destroyed the building, but it has not destroyed the desire in our hearts to continue working with the staff and the leaders of, and the leaders of our council in helping those in need. God bless and have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr., again, Dr. Williams, I do not see him here, so I want to move on to John No applause, Mr. Herman, it's a disruption, please. Mr. Sax and Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Everything's running nice with this new city attorney. I love this new city attorney gentleman here. Let's start with, I was told that I have never been to a City Lights event. I go all the time to watch the soccer at the City Lights Field, which is at the corner of Kwenga and Santa Monica Boulevard. You're not going to claim that I'm some white guy who doesn't know what he's talking about. You have plenty of those here. Okay, let's start with what this is, the money pit. We now find out, go to the L.A. Weekly, this is an excellent story by Gene Mattis. Eric Garcetti said for months he had decided, he hadn't decided whether to move into his mayor's mansion, even as the city completed almost $1.5 million in renovation. This is the First Lady. Now, everyone is telling me about Amy Wakeland coming in here and pushing and throwing her weight around at council in the offices, and the mayor, incidentally, has told everybody to refer to her as the First Lady. Now, look at this article, you see the L.A. Times, you got to understand that the L.A. Times said that the mayor was not thinking about moving in here. They reported that, moving into the mansion. This was while Glenn Dake and the rest of them were outfitting the mansion. Let me tell you how this works. Mr. Dake and, and the, first of all, the reporter, David Zanheiser, he is, has a crush on Eric Garcetti. His heart goes pitter-patter, pitter-patter. Now, that's fine. You can fall in love with somebody you're covering, but it shouldn't affect your reporting. Jason Felch, he, what did he do? He screwed L.A. Times, he screwed people he was interviewing. I would hope that the L.A. Times put your HIV status on your coat--
Thank you, thank you. Your time expired, your time, your time has expired. Okay, Mr. Herman, you're there, so you can come on. Arnold, come on down.
Californians, Californians, more harm, more harm within the Budget and Finance Committee. Just yesterday, Daniel Garcia, first of all, Roy Stone, Henry Marine, Donna, Mr. Herman, were told at the beginning of this ethics budget that we cannot speak under a public comment under the agenda. It's right here in my hand. And I said to you the other day, you're wrong. You're disruptive yourselves because you violate my standing, that is, Mr. Bloomfield, Mr. Corcoran, you, Mr. Coretts, and the other gentlemen that sat on that budget, because you said there was no public comment in the very beginning. I sat there for an hour and 27 minutes. It's on video. Go to one hour and 27 minutes to see the actual disruption of that meeting. And I gently made it clear. You violated my disability rights, you violated my emotional rights, you violated my American rights, you violated every right, including my right to attend a public meeting. So behind the reports, get those reports out there on time and do city business. And that's what I was there for. And I want beautification throughout Boyle Heights, throughout Lincoln Heights, throughout Elserino, because the chinchero of murals you put there suck, I say. So get down to the hood, fix it up, bring the ghetto back, let's get live in L.A. On a sensitive note, I want Hazard Park fixed for those who are disabled. I want to see the disabled, Mr. Labons, fixed, so that people who are disabled, and more so the elderly people affected by your apprehensive effect nonsense to fix sidewalks and streets. We want a budget that will repair, alter, fix sidewalks and streets, repair, alter, fix sidewalks and streets under the ADA and Section 504. You violated our--
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sax, followed by Mr. Akala. Henry, I do not have a card. Okay, Mr. Sax, followed by Mr. Akala.
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, could you please clarify? You mentioned that applause are disruptive, but when you do presentations and you have applause for the people being presented, that's not disruptive. So could you clarify what you say, when you say applause being disruptive?
I will do that, you finish your--
I will, I'm saying, I mean, you bring the subject in. Anyway, there was a story yesterday in the Daily Breeze, and I'm sure it was in the L.A. News, DWP lagging on replacing poles. And it says so much about what the problem is with the city. It shows a chart here from fiscal year 2006-7, right through fiscal year 2013-14, that a goal of replacing power poles in the city of L.A., and part of the story goes into replacing power poles and transformers, which are different than power poles. But it mentions that every year that the goal was set, it was never reached, never reached the goal that was set. And then in fiscal year 2000, fiscal year 2010-11, to fiscal year 2011 and 12, they went to 5,000 power poles, and they're doing barely 25% of them. It's like MTA with Measure R. The city was going, the county, and the measure is going to generate $1,333,000,000, yet the sales tax revenue from the previous year was barely $700,000. How is that possible? You talked about the Holocaust and the factual evidence. These are factual items, and yet nobody wants to address it. How come? Yes, the Holocaust was a terrible thing, but not addressing these factual realities with the budget and the money that's thrown around in the city and the county leads to 40% poverty rate--
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Akala.
The whole thing is moronic, stupid, outrageous, et cetera. Look, what are we actually doing? Money. Let's give money to the people and then let's take it away. Money. Let's print money 24 hours a day. And what if, what if we distributed this money that we print 24 hours a day to every agency, so you won't have to bother the people? It's all fictitious anyway. And you know, in 100 years, none of this shit's going to matter anyway? Hello? Anyway, what we should do is create programs that are real for everybody, like what I'm suggesting in the United World of Free and Clear. Read my book, you idiots. In that book, I describe a way by which we can, we, the people, can finance each other, a place to live, an independent place to live, where we cannot sell it anymore, so we change the laws of real estate, so everybody has a home, and if anybody's eating in city council, the people should be able to eat too, because you are the servant, right, Mr. Price? Are you eating your rice? Anyway, see, we go around doing insane things that are really ridiculous and stupid, because we could have everybody with a place to live, we could have everybody with enough food to eat, we could have a beautiful world, but since we are greedy, stupid assholes, we're not going to do it for a long time. As the Romans, they went down.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes general public comment for this day. Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
That brings us where? Okay, announcements, remember, in fact, I have the first one. The, the people of Cleveland, Ohio, Mr. Labons, are very happy because last night they drafted at number 12-- at number 22 Johnny Manziel, Johnny Football. And I'm excited, since I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. So that's my announcement for today. Mr. Labange.
Well, we wish all of those athletes great health and happiness as they enter this next stage of their profession. I think we should give a shout out to Kevin Durant, named the MVP of the NBA, who gave such an eloquent speech about his mother. Mother's Day is this Sunday. Let's all remember our mothers and the goodness that they've given all of us. And, Mr. President, I also would want to remind us that tomorrow is Fire Service Day, first started in Los Angeles City in 1958, where every firehouse is open. I know those in the San Fernando Valley are working to collect clothing for the mission that burned down, but open house, citywide, Los Angeles City Fire Department.
Mr. Labange, I have a quick assignment. Could you go find out where these young people are?
I sure will.
I'll defer to Mr. Sadio, then I'll return to you for an introduction. Mr. Sadio?
Yes, as you know, the mayor led a delegation to Mexico City, and it was fascinating to see that there's businesses and communities of people who live on both sides of the border. There are people who actually own homes in Mexico, Mexico City, and then here in Los Angeles. And then there are people who do business, like our very own Panda Express, who started here and then now opened up a whole chain of stores in Mexico City. One of the companies in a group that we have here with us today has joined us from Mexico, are opening up a business here in Southern California. And so I want to introduce them. We have with us señor or Mr. Roberto Alortaran, por favor.
Please stand up. Welcome. Welcome. Welcome, thank you for coming.
He is joined by Roberto Litwak.
All right, the cameraman.
And then with a dear friend of ours, señor Juan Carlos Guerrero. They all join us from Mexico City. They're leaving shortly. They're cutting a ribbon today, they're opening up a business here.
Wonderful.
Prenda Mexico, or Prenda Mex. And it's basically microloans, short-term loans that they'll be joining that market, and they'll be opening that up here in Southern California. So I wanted to welcome them here and encourage them to continue to bring business to Southern California, and more specifically to the city of Los Angeles, and more specifically to the 1st District.
Okay, again, welcome, thank you so much for coming.
And then, since we were on sports and entertainment, one of our major industries here, I think all of us should, you mentioned OKC, I happen to be a fan of LA. I think all of us here should mention the incredible leadership of Doc Rivers, of the Clippers, not just as a coach, but as a social and civic leader. Over the last couple of weeks, he's done an extraordinary job. He was acknowledged earlier this week, but I think he should be acknowledged for his incredible leadership. And by the way, the Clippers are playing tonight, too. Keep home court advantage.
He's been great. Mr. Labange, I think we have a special, well, Mr. Labange.
Very special group right here. Let's all say.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon to all of you.
Ready? Westwood Charter School?
Westwood Charter School. Third grade. Third grade.
All right, it's welcome. Now give them a round of applause. Don't, yeah, put the kids on camera. Kids, look at yourselves. Welcome. Tell your parents to, to look at you, you all very, look like movie stars. Okay, any more announcements? Mr. Labange.
You know, Ernie Wooden, our top leader in tourism here, sent us all a brief. Los Angeles was named the world's most powerful brand in a study by The Guardian. Looked at for your mail in there, your email, very important designation. And lastly, breaking news, breaking news, our very own Louis Zamperini, the great one, the one who was a member of the 1936 United States Olympic Team, ran in Berlin, USC Trojan, 47 days on sea as a serviceman shot down, survived. A great man is being named the grand marshal of the Tournament of Roses in 2015. What a great man. He lives in my district. There's a movie being made by Angelina Jolie, Mr. President, and she found out about Louis Zamperini, whose son is our very own PIO for the Building and Safety, Luke Zamperini. But anyway, Angelina Jolie, they live in the Hollywood Hills, she heard about Louis' story, she said, is Louis still around? Well, they live in the lower part of the Hollywood Hills, Brad Pitt and Angelina Jolie, and Louis lives higher. And the person who was representing the interest and asking the questions, he lives right up there, and so it's a small world. This is a great guy. If you have never met him, it's going to be a great Tournament of Roses parade, which is to celebrate so many good things.
And let me jump in.
Yeah.
To identify another great man, who was honored today by Cal State LA, is one of their alumnus of the century. His name was Tom Labange, and he has a big, what is that, a medal?
It's a medal, it's a medal.
Show off this medal that you have. Let's give Labange a round of applause. Your school is very proud of you.
Thank you. And can I just say that? In my acceptance speech, I talked about my mother, because she went to Cal State LA before me. Our mothers have given us so much, and I want to thank you again for closing on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Members, can we rise, all in the council chambers, rise for adjourning motions? I will look to Mr. Sadio's side first, I do not see any. I will now look to Mr. O'Farrell. Yes, go, go right ahead. Oh, Mr. Parks, you have one? Why don't we start off with yours?
Thank you. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Reverend Louise Moore, who was born June 1934, passed away May 2014. Louise entered the ministry in 1971 at Bethel AME Los Angeles under the pastor Reverend Jerry Ford. She's pastored St. Paul's AME Church in Redlands, and the 1st AME Church of Palmdale, California. She later returned to Bethel AME Los Angeles in '87 as an associate minister and had full proof of her ministry, serving in the food distribution ministry and founded the closed ministry, and served as the Minister of Christian Education. She was excited about the ministry for over 37 years and served at the pleasure of six different pastors at Bethel AME Los Angeles. She only missed five annual conferences. Due to her age and health, she was unavailable to travel in her later years. She worked also for over 30 years as a registered nurse. She is one of the first female ministers within the worldwide AME Church. Her funeral service is scheduled for Thursday, May 15, 11:00 a.m. at Bethel AME Church at 7900 Western Avenue, and she's survived by her seven children and a host of family members.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, my first adjourning motion is to pay respects to a young woman who died in the service of our country, representing us so well overseas, Army Specialist Daniela Rojas. Specialist Rojas was born in Los Angeles. She was assigned to the 2nd Battalion's 12th Infantry Regiment, 4th Brigade, I'm sorry, 4th Brigade Combat Team, 4th Infantry Division in Fort Carson, Colorado. She began her assignment as a unit supply specialist at the mountain post in April of 2013, and was deployed to Afghanistan from February 1st to May 3rd of this year. During her 18 months, Ms. Rojas of her active duty, she earned the Army Good Conduct Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, the Afghanistan Campaign Medal with Campaign Star, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, the NATO Medal, and the Army Service Ribbon. Army Specialist Daniela Rojas passed away at the age of 19 on Saturday, May 3, in Hamburg, Germany, due to a non-combat-related illness. She is survived by her father, Lidio Rojas, mother, Yarmina Contreras, sisters Joanna, Janet, Bianca, and brothers Lidio Rojas Jr. and David Rojas. Army Specialist Rojas personified what our country stands for, courage, freedom, integrity, and hope. May she rest in peace. My second adjourning motion is in memory of Fei King Ji. Fei King Ji was born in 1929 and grew up on a farm in Guangzhou, China. She married Harry Ji in 1947, and they lovingly raised five children. For over 50 years, she owned and operated various businesses and invested in commercial and residential real estate. Fei was very well-liked and well-known in the Chinatown community for her generosity and community involvement. She served as a board member for Queen of Angels Hospital, her children's school and church, as well as various charitable organizations, and most recently with the Ji Po Ko Association, Wong Family Association, Chung Jang Association, and as chairman of the Chinatown Public Safety Association. Here's a fun fact, she held one of the first home campaign events for one of my former colleagues, then-council member Mike Wu, in the early 1980s. Fei King Ji passed away on Saturday, May 3, 2014. She is survived by her five children, eight grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace. And lastly, colleagues, it is with really great sadness that I ask that you, we adjourn council in the memory of my friend Pablo Francisco Ruiz. Pablo was born in Havana, Cuba. He received a BFA degree in architecture from the University of Florida, and an MA in planning and urbanism from Universidad Autónoma de México. As architect, designer, urban planner in New York City, he worked with Edward Darrell Stone on the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. He also worked with Skidmore Owens in Merrill, and in 1971, the World's Fair in Osaka, Japan. California projects included NASA, ABC Music Division, Brickell Bay Tower in Miami for the Luckman Partnership. He co-founded Alpha Design Partnership in 1983. Civic and cultural participation included chairman of the South Park Task Force for the CRA, a member of the city of Los Angeles 13th Council District Design Review Committee, also a board member of Barnes-Dole Art Park, the Hollywood Arts Council, and the Melrose Hill Historic Preservation Overlay Zone Board. He was also a member of Moca's Architecture and Design Council. For the city's Cultural Affairs Department, he served on the Executive Committee for Presencia Cubana Festival in Echo Park, and co-chaired A Taste of Hollywood for the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Pablo Francisco Ruiz passed away at the age of 75 at his home in Melrose Hill on April 11th of this year. He is survived by his three children and his wife and partner of 45 years, Jackie. May he rest in peace, and Hollywood is grieving for this man. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, this meeting, members, is adjourned.